Parker Town Council meeting for November 2nd at 6:59. If I talk real slow, it'll get to 6:59 PM. All council members are present. For those of you watching at home on the Facebook livestream, if you are wishing to give public comment, public comment is done on the Zoom stream, so you'll have to pop over there if you want to do public comment on an item. Council, if you would, please join me in honoring our nation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What I need is a chair that actually moves when we want it to.
Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and move over to our Parker Chamber of Commerce updates. I see Omar is on here. Are you here for the chamber tonight? Can you guys hear him?
Very good. I'm here as well.
Okay, okay. Kara, I can hear you. So whoever's here for the chamber, if you'll go ahead and give us your update then.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for having us this evening. The biggest thing we had recently with the chamber is we just completed our top dog of Parker competition. It was just really successful. We had a lot of interaction from our whole community, putting their dogs out there. We made a little over $3,000, which is gonna go into a fund to help some of our chamber members. So we were really excited about that turnout and just the support of our whole community. So that was a real positive thing. And we are just continuing and helping some of these businesses with getting some marketing going for them, advertising and just supporting their businesses and getting some things going for them, especially as we're heading into the holidays. So that is the main things going on with the chamber right now. We're looking forward to November and doing some more fundraising again to help some of our members who are struggling a bit with keeping their memberships and staying involved with our different programs and such. So that is it. Any questions for me this evening?
Council, any questions for Kara? No? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Downtown Business Alliance updates. Omar, is that gonna be you? If you're speaking, we can't hear you.
I'll tell you too.
It is not muted.
Omar, we are not hearing you.
It's Kristin. I don't see anyone else. Okay.
He was connecting and then he muted himself.
Omar, can you unmute yourself? Oh, it went off, went back. There you go.
Okay. Alright, guys.
You're good, go right ahead, Omar.
Alrighty, thank you, sorry about that. So Mayor and Town Council, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Omar Castillo and I'm the Treasurer for the DBA. It's my honor and pleasure to present tonight on half of the DBA. But before we get started, a few things I wanted to say. Tomorrow is a big night for Parker politics on the eve of this election night. I know a few of you up there are running for positions and some for other positions as well, and I wish you all the best of luck. For those of you finishing up your terms, I wish you the best of luck and thank you on behalf of all of us for what you've done for this great time, great town of ours, and appreciate your guys' time. So as far as what the DBA has been up to, we wanna just kinda highlight the memorial, the memorial debate that we did and the Town Council Candidate Forum that we did as well. Up to this point, we've had about 1,000 views for both of the events. And first and foremost, we wanna thank all the candidates that participated and everyone that did well and participated in these great events. There was a valuable product that has been recorded and is out there on the Downtown Business Alliance website. And they've been out there so that can be reviewed by all the people of Parker. Number two, the other item we're working on is continuing to do our due diligence on the planner and entertainment decks. Currently still working with Town regarding the design requirements and solidifying the numbers of each of those items that we need for those decks as well as for those planners. So more to come on that. Number three, we're getting ready to work on some trash pickup along Pike's Peak. That'll be on November 13th, coming up next Friday, and that'll be the last one of the year for 2020 and then looking forward to picking that back up next year in 2021. And then last but not least, we're just in early stages of working on a commercial slash promotional video for the DBA. More to come on that. And that's it for the Downtown Business Alliance. Any questions for me?
Council, any questions for Omar?
I do, Omar. If you would just highlight the trash. I know that we usually do it on Saturdays, but we're doing it on a Friday this time. At noon, nice.
Correct, yep, you got it, Josh. Yeah, so we're gonna do that on Friday at noon. So come bundled up and be ready to be prepared. As you guys know, we've been doing this all summer long. So as much as we stayed on top of it, it typically takes us about 30 minutes to an hour. We'll walk up to the Best Buy and the Les Schwab and then turn back around and we're good to go. So yeah, we invite anybody who wants to join us to be there.
Thanks, sir.
Excellent, any other questions? Omar, thanks a bunch, appreciate all your work.
Hey, you bet, thank you guys, have a good night.
Alright, next up is a public comment. This is for general public comment. And these are the items, if you wish to address council on an item that is not on the agenda, you'll have to go to our website, parkeronline.org, and there is a form for you to fill out while we're amidst the COVID restrictions. That's how public comment is taken and then those items are distributed to council. So next up, we've got reports, items and comments from Mayor and Council. Mr. Dyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week was Dr. Cog Week. Fantastic informational items highlighted by Executive Director of the Color Energy Office, Will Tour.
Yes, yes. Written from Dr. Cog Day.
Will was there, Will was there, gave us a little update. I had a meeting with our Scampi manager, Deputy Public Works Director, Chris Hudson, regarding the High Plains Trail with Centennial. Also attended an E470 roadway committee meeting where we talked about the E470 and Aurora Parkway Overpass IGA. And one item we talked about at, I guess, our last study session, I kinda wanna sort of revisit it. It's sort of a time-critical issue. There's potentially some excess CARES Act money. And, you know, I think I brought up, and there was a little bit of a concurrence last study session. If we had additional CARES Act money, would it be amenable to the council to talk about a grant program for small business and nonprofits? Is that something that the council would wanna talk about in a study session? So to me, I think that's...
So council, just a nod if you're interested in. Okay, you got it.
Yep, that's it, thank you.
Okay, Debbie.
I have Parks and Rec liaison meeting next Monday, so I've not done anything, but I wouldn't like to ask one question.
Okay.
Who comes up with the little sayings that they put on the EMVs on E470?
Great question. I believe it's the operations staff to do. No, no, I can get you a list and the visual representation.
Do you have a claim or do you wanna see something different?
No, I always find them very entertaining.
Do you have a special one that you like? I can put them in rotation, I can request that.
Well, they changed some kind of, like they had a special one for, for Don't Be Friday or whatever. They changed them. I'm on there, good day, going towards the IA.
Pass along, Debbie likes this stuff.
Really?
We'll do it, we'll do it. Alright, Jeff.
Last Tuesday, I had my Board of Directors meeting, the chamber as a liaison. They are doing phenomenal things there in light of COVID. Kara, actually, we had a good conversation about Parker Days and that's coming back to our staff having a conversation with the chamber as well. But Kara also started to display there 21 Season Magazine for the chamber, which will be coming out soon, so looking forward to that.
Cheryl.
Yeah, last week, there was a Douglas County Housing Meeting with Housing Partners and they are getting ready to do some construction on a project. It was an older project, but in Castle Rock. Some remodeling and adding some space there.
Oakwood, pardon, is it Oakwood?
Yes.
Cool. Josh?
Nothing this week, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, let's go ahead and move on to our next item, Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote unless a council member asks to have something removed for further discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for intro only and will not be removed. Council, you have in front of you Consent Agenda Items 6A through 6G.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pull Item D from the consent agenda.
We have a motion. We need a second.
I'm stacking that.
And we have a motion from Jeff and a second from Cheryl to remove Item D from the agenda. So why don't we do this? Would you amend your motion to approve Items A through G with the exception of D? And then we'll hold that separate so we can just get these out of the way?
No, wait a minute.
You've got more? Okay. Then let's just do them individually then. So we have a motion by Josh and a second by Cheryl to remove Item D, or Jeff. I'm sorry, Jeff. I wrote down Jeff. John?
Sure.
Debbie? Jeff? Cheryl? Josh? Okay, Item D has been removed. Other motions, please.
Yes, I'd like to remove Item F from the consent agenda.
We have a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
We have a second from Jeff on Item F. Josh? Cheryl? Jeff? Debbie? John? Do you have Items A through G except for D and A?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A, B, C, E and G, please.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Josh and we have a second from Jeff. Josh? Cheryl? Jeff? Debbie? John? Okay, motion passes unanimously. I will need motions or discussions on Items D or F.
Mr. Mayor, on Item D, I move that we move the first reading of ordinance number 3.308.2 for 60 days up to our first meeting in January.
Jim, what's the most appropriate way to do that?
Well, so there's two points I wanna make. The first is, this is a consent agenda item. It's an ordinance, it's for introduction only. And as you indicated, as part of the record, ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. The second is, I would suggest that if you're gonna continue in ordinance, particularly land use ordinance, which it's subject to notice in public hearing, that you do that the night of the public hearing. That way, anybody that received notice would be at the meeting and then we'd get notice of the continuance. Otherwise, you're gonna force the developer to renotice and republish associated with this particular item.
Thanks for pointing out. I didn't realize it was an ordinance, that's my fault on that. So we have a motion from Jeff, but... Jeff, do you wanna hold your motion or do you wanna rescind it?
Based on that, I'll rescind and I'll move to approve ordinance number 3.308.2.
Motion to approve 6D by Jeff and a second from Debbie. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is F for Resolution 20-054.
Now, I propose that we move that to the first meeting in December.
Okay, so you're moving to move Resolution 20-054 to the first meeting in December. We have a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
And a second from Jeff. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Alright, yes, I mean, to me, I just wanna...
Well, just with one opposed? Do you need a third? Okay, so motion to move it fails, so we have Item 6F in front of you. If you have further discussion on it?
Yeah, I just wanna sort of, I'm sorry. I just wanna understand from Councilmember Poe what the challenges are on this.
Well, outside of seeing what was presented in the agenda, this has never been brought up for discussion in a study session. And since we'll have some council members, I think that it should be saved for that body.
But not at the first meeting in December?
Well, then second meeting or first meeting in January then. But I think it needs to be deferred so staff can bring forth exactly what this is, why it is. And I know it meets, you know, an old state statute, but I think they need an opportunity to understand it.
So Mayor, I know this was voted down, but I would point out, Councilmember Poe, that this is...
But moving it was voted down.
Moving it was voted down. But this is an annual requirement that you have to modify your annexation on an annual basis. So I would be fine if you wanted to continue to December 7th. It's problematic if we wait until 2021 because then we would essentially violate its statutes. That's uncommon.
Is it based on an annual date? Or when was it last adopted?
Last year.
Last year, this time.
And so what I guess, what is the whole, what is it you don't like about the three mile plan?
I just feel that if we're acting on this now, it should wait till the new council's here so they understand what's going on.
We act on it every year.
His statute requires it.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's not a one time, it's an annual thing, correct?
That's correct.
It's simply more administrative?
Well, again, under the Annexation Act, you're required to have an annexation plan in place in order to annex. And so it's a three-mile plan and every year, Town Council about this time approaches the plan. I don't think it's been modified.
So this was approved last year? I mean, this council approved this last year?
Correct, every year.
Every year. Okay, I would entertain a motion on 6F, please. Move to approve Consent Agenda Item 6F, please.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Debbie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have three yeses and two nos, motion passes. Next item up is Item 7, Public Hearing. 7A is ordinance number 1.547 on first reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to adopt the 2021 budget and to make appropriations for the same. Mary Lou, you're gonna be walking us through this time?
Hi, I'm Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
If you wouldn't mind just telling everyone at home what you do.
I am Mary Lou Brown and I am the Finance Director for the town. And then that tried to give me my first heart attack in my life when she announced, two minutes before we started, that she didn't have my presentation. So I was either gonna have a heart attack or you were gonna have to see me dance. Here we go, with the presentation.
We do have the presentation.
Alright, tonight is the first public hearing for the budget. And so if we start with page two, which kinda shows the calendar that we've been on. For those listening in, this is definitely not the first time council has heard me talk about the budget. Internally, we start working on the budget the middle of July. We come in front of council for the very first time with the Budget Retreat, which happened at the end of September. We have had two study sessions where I was available to respond to questions or take questions. We met the legal requirement of posting a budget by October 15th that was posted on the internet. And today, we're at November 2nd, which is the first public hearing. The second reading for the adoption of the budget is scheduled for November 16th. And then prior to January 31st, it will be filed with the state and with the GFOA. We move to the next page. Just to kinda highlight again the guidelines that we used in bringing this forward. The budget is something that the town administrator is required to bring forward to council in a balanced format. So we have done that. And in pulling that budget together, she and I worked together, we use these four primary guidelines in creating that budget. So we have the General Fund Required Cash Balance, which is an ordinance that was approved by council. We have our focus on combination of employees and citizens. So we have our investment in our employees that we make through our performance pay increases and healthcare increases. And we also have addressed the community side through the maintenance and growth of programs for our citizens. The last item is preparing financially for some upcoming strategic infrastructure decisions. That will go to the next page and take a look in a little more in-depth at the budget approach.
Did our computer lock up? Technology. Now it's time to dance. I don't, can we get some dance music coming? Could you help with it? It doesn't like this slide, is this where it hangs up? There we go.
Alright, so here, we're all still dealing with the virus. We're still not certain all of the impacts this year and definitely don't know what all the impacts are in 2021. So that was taken into consideration as we pulled together the budget. You'll see as we move into revenue that the revenue growth is on the lower end of our typical range. The creation of the savings account. So this is how government creates the ability to purchase things. We have to have money unless we're going to borrow it in place before we can do something. So we do create these funds where we have that savings account. And this is for town infrastructure requirements. This is an area that we've been missing out on up to date. The next item? The deliberate use of cash balances. Then we go on to, we have limited operational growth. I have a slide that'll look at that. As I mentioned, we make our investment in our employees. So we have our 3% performance pay funding and our commissioned officer step plan in place. We have a contingency in place for our town retirement plans where we're dealing with an issue. And then we also have additional transfers from the general fund. With that, we'll take a look at our revenue sources in the general fund. And the next couple of pages are really going to be focused on just the general fund. So if you take a look at this, we have our top five revenue sources. And those five revenue sources create between 80 and 85% of the total revenue within the general fund. Out of that, obviously, sales taxes are a major source of revenue and that makes up approximately 70%. I'm gonna deviate from budget conversation just briefly here. For an update on our sales tax, we have been ticking down. So we started in July with a year-to-date growth of 8%. August, 7%. September, 6%. With that trend, we are now in October with a 5% year-to-date growth. So you can see here for the 2020 projection, I've got just under or just over 2.5% growth. If we continue the next two months, as we have done, we'll be sitting at about 3%. That is also the growth rate that I used for the 2021 sales tax revenue number. From there, we'll go to the next page, which takes a look at our salary and benefits assumptions. Again, I mentioned the 3% performance pay and police commissioned officer step plan that accounts for $635,000. Our medical benefits are going up on the town side, $543,000. We have tempered the growth for both the town and the employees by implementing two new plans for 2021. We will stay with our current provider, Cigna, but we will implement their local plus options. So we will have a local plus OAP and a local plus high deductible plan also. We will incent employees to move to the local plus option because that is an option that does save both the employee and the town the most money. The last item under salary and benefits are incremental full-time positions. We have one new position that is included within the Public Works Department. We have three part-time positions that are scheduled to move to full-time. And then we have the increase that council approved for the judge. From there, if we move on to our operational expenses, this is where you can see where we've controlled the expenses looking at budget versus budget. So our 2021 budget, our operational expenses is budgeted at $12.1 million. Our proposed 2020 budget is at $11.9. That's a 1.7% increase year-over-year from budget perspective. Included in both 2020 and 2021 are some COVID-related expenditures. John referenced that a little bit earlier. In the 2020 budget, between these two line items, we have just a little over half a million dollars included. In the 2021 budget, we have $250,000 included. Then if we take a look at capital within the general fund, the total capital budget for 2021 is just under $1.3 million. This does exclude our fleet purchases. Those are made out of a different fund. They are charged back to different organizations. But within the general fund, we have that limited capital because most of our public infrastructure projects come out of our Public Improvements Fund. We have 17 projects and/or purchases that are included in there. The largest dollar amount, I believe, is for a truck that will have a plow and a spreader attached to it. The smallest dollar amount is $14,000 for an enclosed trailer. And in between those two is everything that you can imagine that it takes to run a town. We have traffic signal equipment, data room security expenditures and replacement of the boiler here at Town Hall. So this slide actually summarizes the 2021 budget for the general fund. So if we look at the far right-hand column, this is the 2021 budget as it stands right now. We have our beginning cash of $27.4 million, revenue of 56.5, operating expense of 52.9. Our transfers out for a total expense of 65.5, ending cash of 18.4. And then that all-important ratio of our cash to expense were budgeted to be at 28.1%. With that summary for the general fund, we feel that we did achieve the budget guidelines that we set out to follow and have placed the general fund in a solid financial position for 2021. I want to touch on just a couple of our other funds on page 12, Dinet. Parks and Recreation Fund. This is our Parks and Recreation area where the capital projects come out of primarily for them. And so you can see their revenue for 2021 of just over $10 million. Expenditures related to approved projects of 13.4 and the ending fund balance of 8.1 million. Our Recreation Fund and then what will follow, our Cultural Fund, are two funds that are struggling a bit, not unexpectedly. This is all due to the close, closing down, shutting down, slowing down, however you wanna say it, of our operations. So if we look at our Rec Fund, you can see here where for 2021, we are expecting the fund to end up with $1.3 million. That is down from 2019 of 2.1. I think the major takeaway from this, you can see that the 2021 budget for charges for services is actually anticipating growth over 2019. And we'll have to see if that's what comes true since unfortunately, we're now having to scale back again. With our Cultural Fund, we see some of the same things. Our ending cash balance due to an incremental $550,000 transfer from the general fund in 2020. The 2020 cash balance is slightly over a million dollars. That falls to about half a million dollars with the 2021 budget. This fund, just like the Rec Fund, we will be watching as we go through the remainder of 2020 and early 2021 to see if we need to make any further adjustments. From there, if we go back to page 21 and take a look at our Public Improvements Fund, this is the fund that I mentioned earlier where the majority of our streets' infrastructure is paid for. It is in a strong position. We have revenue in 2021 of just under 10 million coming in, expenses of 19.5 and an ending fund balance of 19.5. The next page and the page following that are lists of the capital projects that are scheduled for 2021. We have a number of them. These are listed in no particular order. So take a look at them. Many of these projects do have revenue coming in from other sources that offset some of the cost. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mary Lou. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mary Lou? Okay, not seeing any. We'll go ahead and go to public comment at 7:28 PM. If there's anyone in our, on the Zoom here for public comment, use your raise the, raise your hand feature, and we will move you over for comment. Not seeing any, Dinette, can you verify?
Correct, there are no public comments.
Okay, then we'll close public comment at 7:28 PM. Counsel, I would entertain further discussion or a motion for item 7A.
I have a question. Okay. Mary Lou, can you walk me back through this $11 million surplus that we're expecting to see in 2021 and the building of the Capital Reserve Fund?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I did, Brandy Wilks does have a comment. I apologize.
Yes. Okay, so let's go ahead and open public comment back up at 7:29. And Brandy, you know the routine, state your name and address for the record, and you've got a three-minute time limit.
Hi, Brandy Wilks, 17402 East Newtown Parkway, Parker, Colorado 80134. Ironically enough, that was my exact question, too, was just some more clarification on the surplus for the budget, if there was a breakdown of where that surplus was coming from. So that question got asked, which is why I lowered the hand, but that works, so thank you.
Close public comment at 7:29. And Mary Lou, if you would address Jeff and Brandy's question, that'd be great.
I will do so. And Dinette, if we can go back to page nine. All right, so the $10 million that the budget is showing transferring out from the general fund to the Capital Facilities Reserve Fund, that's the question. Correct. All right. So if you look at the beginning cash for 2021, it is $27.4 million. And the ending cash in the 2020 proposed budget is 15.9, so almost $16 million. There is almost a $10 million difference between those two. That is because we are anticipating in our projected 2020 numbers that revenue is actually going to be coming in $10 million higher than what is shown in this proposed budget. This is a result of conversations with council. The add-backs and add-ins that are for 2020 that were on the consent agenda that we'll have a discussion about in two weeks. Included, there is an increase for our sales tax, but not the full amount. Because at the time that we talked about this, council felt that there was enough unknown that we didn't want to increase to the full extent possible. So we are sitting with a $10 million pickup from 2020. That is one-time money. And so as we think about this, if I, I'm going to put on my Rhonda hat because Rhonda's our true accountant, and she lives in her world, and I live in my finance world. But within the world of accounting, we have what is referred to as a matching principle. And so with both GAAP and GASP, so the generally accepted accounting principles for the public sector and for GASP, which is our governmental accounting standards, we have to follow that matching principle. So I can't take $10 million and say, I'm going to use that one-time money for operational expense because I've only got that money one time. When I get to 2021, if I used it for operational expense, to fund operational expense, I don't have it again in 2022. So the way to deal with that then is to use it for one-time sources. Capital is considered a one-time use of funds. We can make that expenditure once. We obviously have an ongoing capital program, but that program is revised each year, and it can be responsive to those one-time dollars that are available. So that money is again from, from the most part, from 2020. We did have a slightly higher cash balance coming into 2020 after our audit was completed than what we had been expecting. So we picked up a couple million dollars there also.
So, so Mary Lou, what's, what's then the juxtaposition of your first statement of, we started out at 8, we're going to end up in 3% higher than we expected, and to this $10 million?
So in the proposed budget, the revenue that we are projecting, based on that 2.5 or 2.6% growth in 2020, is $55.4 million. So that is almost again that $10 million difference in revenue. So we've had that revenue come in, and we're now taking it and moving it as one-time dollars.
And what's the source of that revenue? Is it sales tax?
It's all of our revenue for the most part in the general fund, but yes, and sales tax makes up 70%.
And then is, is debt retirement, is that a one-time payment?
Yes, so I'll go down that card. So we
No, no, I, I'm just asking if you include that. So you, you're including, you know, other things, not operational, but as long as it's not our day-to-day, so we can't hire a staff member that we're going to have in 2021, but the council can direct other areas?
Yes.
As long as it's one-time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Could you, just for those at home, could you explain what capital really means? Because I know a lot of times people go, does that mean just cash? They don't realize that means things like capital improvements, building, road, you know, that kind of stuff?
Right, so when I'm using capital here in the government world, it's not capital. As people who work in the private sector think about it, capital here is our expenditures for our capital assets. So it's anything that costs over $5,000 and has a life in excess of one year. So we have to plan to have cash available for those expenditures, and we refer to those as capital. So if you think about the $55 million of expense in the general fund, that really breaks out into two pieces. So it breaks out into our operating expense, and it breaks out into the one or two million dollars of capital expenditures also.
It's a common question I get, what capital? So thank you. Other questions for Mary Lou? Josh? Mary Lou, could you, if you would, prior or before the COVID anomaly, could you talk to me a little bit about our descending revenue, our, our sales tax and how we were budgeting 6% and then a 4% growth and then a 2% growth? And this was, 2020 was a budgeted at what percent growth?
So 2020 was budgeted at 4%, I believe, 3% or 4%. I didn't bring my rep at my sales tax slide tonight. But we have had a situation here in the town where really since 2017, the growth in our sales tax, and it's the growth, it's not the absolute dollar amounts, it's that growth percentage has been declining. So we started out in 2017, I believe, at around 9%. And we came down to 4% last year in 2019. We actually popped up. I think we ended up the year around 6%. But I can tell you from a budgeting perspective, it's a whole lot easier to budget a lower amount and deal with it coming in a little bit higher than having to go the other direction as we've had to several times now here at the town in the last couple of years.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Other questions, counsel? Okay, before you guys, you have item 7A. I would entertain a motion then, please. I move to approve ordinance number 1.547 on first reading and schedule second reading for November the 16th, 2020 as part of the consent agenda.
Second?
Is that right? No, that's not right. Is the second a full public hearing? Okay, so that's Counsel, if I could, run that in my motion. I move to approve the ordinance, ordinance number 1.547 on first reading and to schedule second reading for November the 16th, 2020 as part of the regular agenda. And a motion from Josh?
Second.
Second from Debbie? John?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Josh? Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is item 7B. This is Bowie Property Annexation and Zoning. This was continued from October 5th, 2020. I know there's going to be one presentation, but we've got three items, so I'm going to read the three items into the record here. We have item number one, which is resolution number 20-052. This is a resolution to establish the town council's findings of fact and conclusions, therein concerning the Bowie property annexation. Item number two is ordinance number 2.274 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory known as the Bowie property. And item number three is ordinance number 3.356 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance zoning certain property within the town of Parker, Colorado, known as the Bowie property to a agricultural district pursuant to the town of Parker, land development ordinance, and amending the zoning ordinance and map to conform therewith. Brianna? June?
All right, thank you. Good evening, mayor and town council.
Could you real quick tell everyone at home what you do?
Oh, I'm Brianna. I'm an associate planner with the town.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and town council. This proposal is to zone the 48.9 acre Bowie property to agricultural in conjunction with an annexation application. The subject property, known as the Bowie property, is located in unincorporated Douglas County and is surrounded by the town of Parker. The Bowie property is located on the east side of Parker Road, north of Pine Drive, and south of Parker Adventures Hospital. The subject property is approximately 49 acres in size and owned by the Bowie Family Partnership, LLP. The town is proposing an enclave annexation of the Bowie property and will zone the property A agricultural district, which is the town zoning most similar to the existing county zones. The Bowie property has been completely surrounded by the town of Parker for a period of not less than three years and is considered an enclave under the Municipal Annexation Act of 1965. The town has committed to a policy of actively pursuing the annexation of enclaves. The subject property is located within the town's planning area described in the Parker 2035 master plan. The general land use map within the Parker 2035 master plan identifies this property as being within the medical character area. The property is represented by a red rectangle in the center of the map. The medical designation recommends medical care, preventive healthcare, and a business environment. The subject property is located along Parker roads, surrounded by properties within the town boundaries, and is located within the town's growth boundary. The annexation and zoning fulfills the town of Parker's goals of actively pursuing annexations of enclaves and roads to allow for continuity of services within the Parker 2035 planning area. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage facilities, and design considerations, and the project will not result in additional municipal service costs. The project satisfies the nine criteria required in the land development ordinance for to rezone the property, and referral agency comments have been addressed. Planning Commission heard this item on October 2nd of 2020 and recommended approval. Additionally, staff sent three letters to the property owner concerning this annexation. Staff has not heard from the property owner at this time. Therefore, staff and planning commission recommend that town council approve the Bowie enclave property rezoning. Staff is available for any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for Brianna before we go to public comment? Cheryl?
Yeah, on your three attempts to communicate with property owners, how was that done?
It was via mail.
It was fine?
No.
Why not?
There were no requirements that it was certified, so we just sent it via regular first-class mail.
Other questions? Cheryl?
I just feel that certified would have been appropriate.
All right, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment at 7:43 PM. If the three people who are in our attendee list have public comment, use your raise your hand feature, please. Would you move Laura over? All right, Laura, you will have a, if you could state your name and address for the record, please, and you know the rules with the three-minute time limit. You go ahead and unmute yourself, too, Laura.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council, Town Council members. My name is Laura Hefta, and I am at 18236 Shadberry Lane, Parker, Colorado 80134. And I did want to address the mail issue on this matter. In Parker, I would just tell you from a regular citizen's perspective that I've had some mail troubles in getting bills from various dental offices, and I have most, moved most of my bill paying online. And in this particular case, I believe that a property owner should have adequate notice when something is going to be annexed onto their land. And that certified mail would be appropriate in this situation. There's a couple of ways you can do it before you take legal action on someone's property. You can send regular mail twice and the third time certified mail. But I will tell you, from the military perspective, the United States Army and the Department of Defense, whenever we're going to take serious legal action against someone on a matter, certified mail is the norm. And that way, the rights of the individual are ensured if any administrative action is taken against them. No knock on the postal service, but certified mail is a surefire way to ensure that the person's legal rights have been recognized, they've signed for the mail, and then that can be entered into the record on an administrative basis, and the action can proceed smoothly if they've signed for that piece of mail. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak to this issue tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, Laura. Brandy, did you raise your hand as well? What was that? No?
No, she did not.
Oh, she just did.
Okay.
If you could, there you go. Hey, Brandy, same thing, if you'd state your name and address for the record, please, and there's a three-minute time limit.
Yep, Brandy Wilks, 17402 East Newtown Parkway, Parker, Colorado 80134. So I don't know what all steps have been taken and what the letter was taken. However, when campaigning, I was looking for permission to put my banner up on that land, and it took me about an hour, but I was actually able to come up with the guy's address and his son and daughter who live right here in Aurora. And so I'm just curious, because their phone numbers are public records, I actually left a couple messages. Were there any other steps taken to get ahold of their next of kin who just happened to live in Aurora as well, or the person himself, or was it just sent via mail? Because I was able to pretty easily, with my lack of resources that the town has, get more contacts available. So I just am curious what other steps, or if it was just the letters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment on this item? Use your raise the hand feature if you have. Okay, not seeing any?
Do you have any comments?
Okay.
Mayor, can I address the notice question?
Well, let me close public comment at 7:47 PM. Mr. Maloney, please.
So there are two notice requirements, and as a municipality, we follow state law. There's also a town code provision which deals with notice. There's basically four types of notice for an annexation. So under the annexation statute, the statute specifically provides that notice has to be posted in the newspaper for five successive weeks. That happened here. Now our town code takes over. The town code makes it very clear. We also put notice on the town's website. We also mail notice. And the notice requirement for mail notice is first-class And the notice requirement for mail notice is first class mail, not certified mail. That was a town council decision, it was discussed certified mail versus first class mail. Town council made the decision, first class mail, that's what's in your code. The property is also posted. It was posted for the planning commission meeting, the property was also posted for the town council meeting. And I believe that Brianna did indicate that all notice requirements satisfied under both the state statute and under town code. Does that help?
Uh, thank you for the clarification, absolutely. Okay, council, further discussion on this item? There's three of them in front of you.
Brianna, could you go a little bit more into depth about the uh, the zoning? Uh, Douglas County is compared to Parker zoning and and equality, equality of those zoning, please?
So currently in the county, it's agricultural. So moving into agricultural in the town is fairly consistent. When there is development to occur on the site, they will rezone it to a more appropriate zoning for development.
Thank you very much. Other questions, council? Otherwise, I will entertain motions on the three items. I move to approve resolution number twenty dash zero five two.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh and we have a second from Debbie. Josh?
Aye.
Cheryl?
No.
Jeff?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes with one no vote from Cheryl Poe. Next item number two.
I move to approve ordinance number two point two seven four on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Debbie. John?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Cheryl?
No.
All right, Josh. Okay, motion passes with one no from Cheryl Poe. Next item?
I move to approve ordinance number three point three five six on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh and a second from Debbie. Josh?
Aye.
Cheryl?
No.
Jeff?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes with one no vote from Cheryl Poe. Next item up is item eight, ordinances, eight A is ordinance number four dot five three dot eight on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend subsection ten point oh nine point zero one zero A of the Parker Municipal Code concerning the roadway design and construction criteria, criteria manual. Alex? Oh, man, the beard's looking good, too. The mask was heightened, I thought you still had the same, you know?
Thank you very much, Mr. Maloney. Well, thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, my name is Alex Messon with the Town City Engineering Department. My department has prepared a set of proposed revisions to the town's roadway design and construction criteria manual for the council's consideration. Provide a brief history of the manual. It was originally adopted in nineteen ninety four and has been revised five times since, most recently in two thousand and eighteen. The manual sets forth minimum standards and criteria for the design and construction of all public roadways within the town. Last revision that came before you in eighteen focused on revisions to the town's pavement design criteria. That's actually what the key revisions tonight that are being proposed proposed tonight will be as well. Um, the pavement design criteria ensures that roadways constructed within the town have adequate pavement sections and subgrade to hold up to the traffic they anticipated to carry. So on the proposed twenty twenty revisions, a complete summary of the proposed changes were included in tonight's packet. If the council has any questions about any of those items, I can certainly address those. Um, staff have characterized most of the proposed revisions as minor in nature. Uh, many of them were clarifications to existing criteria or small changes to some of our standard details. There are the two key revisions I would like to provide more information for you on tonight. Um, again, they're both related to our pavement design criteria. The first change would add a minimum asphalt thickness for collector and arterial roadways. And the second change would add a requirement to use a stronger SMA asphalt mix for surface lifts on arterial roadways. To start with the minimum asphalt thickness change, um, it is a pretty straightforward change. Currently, the town's criteria calls for a five inch minimum asphalt thickness on local roadways. Um, there is no minimum currently stated for collector and arterial roadways, which for the council's benefit, those are our more major roadways. They carry higher volume of traffic, more truck traffic, that kind of thing. Really, it hasn't created an issue historically. You know, we've gotten pretty good pavement sections from developers in the past. Um, but you know, we really, staff would like to set, go ahead and set a minimum asphalt thickness for those roadways just to set clear expectations for developers and also to kind of head off any conflicts that might come should we get substandard pavement sections proposed to the town. So this revision proposes to add a six inch minimum thickness for residential collector and then an eight inch minimum thickness for non-residential collectors and arterial roadways. The town basically already uses these depths on our capital projects and they're really in line with what other jurisdictions, um, kind of our neighboring counties and cities are doing as well. So the second change was regarding SMA mixed requirements. Um, really, this would add a requirement to use what's called stone mastic asphalt or SMA on all arterial roadways within the town. SMA basically gets more durable, more rut resistant asphalt mix. It's typically used on high traffic roadways, some of your, your major highways, your major state highways. Um, really, the roads are going to carry a lot of truck and and high traffic volumes. Um, there are agencies throughout the metro area that currently do use SMA for the top course of their major roadways. I've listed those here, you know, Cedar and Aurora are the most um, familiar to our residents that use us on some of their more major roadways. Um, the town actually used SMA on two of our resurfacing projects this past year. Um, those are Crown Crest Boulevard from Parker Road to the east and then Dransville Road, um, south of Lincoln Avenue down to About Plaza. SMA does cost more, it costs about thirty percent more than standard surface course asphalt. When you project on an entire pavement section with a subgrade and base lifts of asphalt, it's about five percent more for the entire pavement section. Um, you know, based on what town staff has observed in other jurisdictions that use this, we're pretty confident that the 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 improved performance and longevity of the roadway that we'll get would offset that added cost. Really, what we're looking to do here is to invest more upfront to make our maintenance dollars go further down the way. We think that we'll be able to push out some of our more major maintenance activities using this material. You know, our mill and overlays, our reconstructs, we think we can delay those longer and make our maintenance dollars again go further down the road. So we think it's a net benefit long term to our roadway maintenance program. This next slide, um, is really just to illustrate where we would use the SMA based on this proposed revision. Um, what you have in front of you is a typical section from a town capital project, um, that shows kind of the roadway. I believe this was from Chambers Road, um, which the town constructed about three years ago. Um, you can see the different layers of pavement that are in there. This particular road had nine and a half inches of H M A or hot mix asphalt. Um, under that was a twelve inch layer of aggregate base course or rock. And then there's, you know, some additional subgrade work below that, but we'd be looking at the top two inches, the surface course of our asphalt roadways that would use this SMA. So it is a pretty small portion of the overall pavement section. So again, this this proposed requirement would require all projects in the town, so capital and development projects, to use a two inch SMA surface course for arterial roadways on that are, those are our major roads, that Stro Road, Chambers Road, Hess Road, et cetera. Really adding this formula to the criteria, what it allows staff to do is to obligate developers to use this. Um, you know, we can, the town can always use this in our projects if we choose to, but adding it formally to the manual allows us to obligate developers to do so. Um, you know, the the one caveat to that is this project or this product SMA does have to be installed during the summer months. It's very temperature dependent, so it can't be installed during cooler times in the spring and the fall when standard asphalt can be paved. So we recognize we may have to be a little bit flexible developers at times and probably what that looks like is a cash and lieu option. If they're ready to pay surface course late in the fall or or we're just not going to get temperatures for another six months, we would probably allow them to pay to the town the cash and lieu, the extra cost of the SMA instead. So that's the one caveat we would have to that. And so finally, um, this, this, these provisions were sent out for outside review and referral. Um, they were sent out to all agencies with an interest in town criteria through the town's E track and system. Um, the changes were also discussed with the town's development liaison committee, the D L C. Um, that's a, that's a committee of local developers who provide the town with feedback on development related issues. Overall, we received a handful of comments from our outreach. Um, most of them were suggestions about additional changes, none were in opposition to any of these changes. Does that conclude my presentation tonight? I'm happy to answer any questions the council has.
Alex, thanks a bunch. Council questions, Josh?
All right, Alex, can you talk about the, the, how long, how much longer does SMA versus H M A? And what does that do when getting growth paid for it? What does that do to our citizens in perpetuity as, as far as, I mean, rebuild or repay the road?
Yeah, I mean, we think it's hard to say, you know, it's road dependent on on what little traffic loading, traffic volumes around the road. We think we could push out some of our major maintenance activities, you know, four, five, six years down the road. And really, that just has a cascading effect on our overall maintenance program. It's less, you know, our, again, it stretches our dollars, we're able to address more pressing issues sooner. Um, it has a pretty big benefit to our maintenance program.
And then second question on the cash and lieu. Um, obviously, if it only can be done in summer, then conveniently they won't be able to do it in summer and they'll be stuck doing H M A. But the cash and lieu essentially see, even if you can't do it, you have to give money to the town so we can do it when your road runs out in ten years.
That's correct. And then obviously, our first preference is going to be have developers actually put this in upfront. I mean, now that they have it, we have it, if we have it in the criteria, they'll be, they should be able to plan. You should be able to say upfront, we expect you to put this in in the summer, plan around it. Now, who knows what happens with weather and other utility issues, a number of things can happen, but we will have that option. Obviously, our first preference to have it put in from the start and have it there from the get go.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes, under session six, we talk about the truck percentage to be used in asphalt pavement designs. What was it currently, was it totally absent? And what are you looking at with this?
Correct, so currently our our design calculation method does not have a minimum truck percentage. It has to be assumed, um, when they're calculating the loading on roadway. We're proposing four percent. That is pretty standard, um, with other jurisdictions. It's really what we usually see. We're putting in there because we did have one project that tried to assume, I think, one and a half or two percent this year. And so there was a lot of back and forth to get that back where it needed to be. So we want to go ahead and have that in there to make sure it's accounted for upfront.
Is there anything in there that talks about the type of truck, the weight it's carrying?
Yeah, it's pretty. Yep, it's it's standard going into those, um, you know, looking into the the method we use, which is an ASHTO, an American Highway, American Association of State Highways Transportation Organizations. Um, but loading is standard, it's a standard delivery truck that's used in those calculations.
And the second question is, will this um, change affect pending permits that have not been completed? Or is it, when does it start?
So a- any application that's already been, I think the distinction we've made is any project that's under construction currently, we would not be able to retroactively apply this to, but any project that has not gone to construction yet, we would look to apply this to.
Thank you.
Other questions? Nope, we were mesmerized by the door.
It was the ghost in the room?
Yeah, the door to the back that miraculously opened itself up behind Jim's Serapis and then just now miraculously closed itself behind it. So we were kind of focused on that a little bit, all right. Was there other questions? Thank you, Alex, we're going to go ahead and open up public comment at seven fifty nine P M. If there's anyone, if either, either Brandy or Laura have a question, go ahead and use your raise your hand feature.
No questions.
Seeing none, we'll close public comment at eight P M and I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
Uh, I move to approve ordinance number four point five three point eight on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion from John and we have a second from Debbie. John?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Josh?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is eight B. This is ordinance number nine dot two eight zero dot one on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to approve the third replacement intergovernmental dispatch services agreement by and between the town of Parker and the city of Lone Tree. Jamie, are you going to lead us or is Big Dog going to lead us?
I'm going to lead.
All right.
Jamie Nguyen, I'm the Assistant Town Attorney.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council members. We are here before you today to ask you to approve ordinance number nine point two eight zero point one to approve the third replacement intergovernmental dispatch services agreement between Parker and Lone Tree. The town of Parker and the city of Lone Tree have been involved in an agreement to join dispatch services since two thousand and five. That agreement has been previously amended. With this amendment for the third intergovernmental agreement, we have made mostly administrative changes, we have cleaned up some of the sections. The main changes for this intergovernmental agreement are the formula used to calculate the proportionate costs for the two entities as well as determining the finance finances going forward. We have worked with our finance department who has requested that we do a lag year to allow for finance to run the numbers appropriately and to give time to input those numbers into the agreement going forward. Those are the two main changes and we are happy to answer any specific questions.
Thank you very much. Council, questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll open it for public comment at eight oh two P M. Brandy and Laura, if you have any questions, go ahead and use your raise your hand feature. Brandy has one, would you go ahead and move her over? Brandy, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yep, Brandy Wilks, one seven four zero two, East Newtown Parkway, Parker, Colorado, eight zero one three four. My only question is, um, and I might have misunderstood it, but the taking a lag year, um, for the financials to be reviewed, does that mean, um, not having dispatch cover Parker and Lone Tree for a year or did I misunderstand that?
Okay, thank you very much. Laura, did you have a question? It looks like Brandy, oh, Laura, you do have a question. Laura, if you could go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, we'll do all the answers at the same time.
Laura did not raise her hand.
Oh, it looked like she got, she got moved, oh yeah, no worries, just checking. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment at eight oh three P M and Jamie?
The lag year does not put a lag in for the actual dispatch services. What it does, it allows the finance department to take the budget from this year and use it as the budget for next year as well. Therefore, we don't have as tight of a timeframe to try to get all the numbers approved. We did get this I G A approved by Lone Tree on October twentieth, but it's usually a squeeze to try to get both town entities to approve it. So it just gives that lag with calculating the numbers. So next year's will be based on twenty twenty's budget, twenty twenty two will be based on twenty twenty one's budget and so forth.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, with that, I'd entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to state, I I truly appreciate the work done in this. Um, I think it's a great example of the partnership that we have in Douglas County. Our super city, um, recognizing that we have a great dispatch and our police station and then allowing, allowing them to supplement, if you will, those dispatchers and not having to have redundancies that are needed. I think citizens of both Lone Tree and Parker should should greatly appreciate that. And I appreciate the work that was done here by both chiefs, thank you very much, and the staffs.
Cheryl?
Yeah, um, what is the cost effectiveness for each entity with this type of agreement?
I think that it's a proportionate cost for both entities. I I believe that both are paying their proportionate share. It saves Lone Tree money because they don't have to create their own dispatch center and they basically pay for the services they utilize from Parker, including benefits, staffing and all equipment.
So that's their benefit. What's Parker's?
We receive the funds from the city of Lone Tree funding.
Correct.
It's a fund, it's a funding and they also help pay for some of the staffing and dispatches as well.
Okay. I would entertain a motion then, please.
I move to approve ordinance number nine point two eight zero point one on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Debbie and we have a second from Cheryl. Josh?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is item eight C. This is ordinance number five dot zero two dot seven on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend section three dot zero one dot zero eight zero of the Parker Municipal Code concerning trials. I don't have my glasses on and I almost said trails. Trials. Jamie?
That's all right, I spell it trails more often than that. Just spell check and grammar check. Good evening again, Mayor and Council members. I am asking you to approve on second reading ordinance number five point zero two point seven to amend the current municipal code with respect to trials. Currently, the town of Parker's municipal code charges a jury fee of forty five dollars for a jury trial request. However, we have determined that that fee is not consistent with the state's municipal court rules as handed down by the Colorado Supreme Court. Therefore, in order to be consistent with the court rule requirements, we are seeking an amendment for jury trial fees to be twenty five dollars.
Okay.
And I am open to any questions regarding that.
Counsel, any questions for Jamie? Never had to do a jury trial, so I'm just. You've always wanted to be on a jury? All right, seeing no questions, we'll open it up for public comment at eight oh six P M. Brandy or Laura, if you have a question, use your raise your hand feature, please.
There are no public comments, Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public comment at eight oh six and I entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number five point seven two point one on second reading.
Second. We have a motion from Debbie and a second from Jeff. Josh?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is item D. This is ordinance number five dot seven two dot one on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend section eight dot zero eight dot zero six zero of the Parker Municipal Code concerning display, consumption or use of marijuana in public places. Jamie?
All right, me again. Uh, we are seeking Town Council approval to amend the Parker Municipal Code under ordinance number five point seven two point one for the section of the code dealing with display, consumption or use of marijuana in public places. Currently, the town of Parker Municipal Code- Currently, the Town of Parker Municipal Code with respect to all marijuana provisions has a penalty of up to $100 fine being imposed. This section did not have any specific penalty included in it. Therefore, we are seeking the amendment to include the up to $100 fine being imposed for any violations under this section. And I'm happy to answer any questions regarding that modification.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions on this item? Are there any questions? I was trying to work in some like marijuana references, like hi, or, you know, don't let it go up in smoke, but then, okay, obviously none. So, Weldy's shaking her head, that means I've gone too far. Let's go ahead and open up public comment at 8:08 PM. If there's any public wishing, Laura has her hand raised. Okay, Laura, if you could state your name and address for the record, please. Unmute, why don't you unmute yourself first, though?
Thank you. I'm quite not getting the hang of this phone. Okay, thank you. My name is Laura Hefta, Mr. Mayor and Town Council members, and I'm at 1-8236 Shadberry Lane, Parker, Colorado 80134. Yes, and so I just want to ask again, just for public consumption, where this information will be posted, so people understand in our town that there is a fine increase for smoking marijuana in public. Where can we find that information? Where will it be posted for all the members of our community to know? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brandy, did you raise your hand if you have a question? If not, we'll go ahead and close public comment at 8:09 PM. And Jamie, just clarify, because it's not an increase.
Correct.
There's no increase in fine, it's just cleaning up and clarifying, correct?
Correct, technically, it's potentially a decrease in the fine. The current fine would, because there's no specific provision, would fall under the general section of 8.01.040, which could be a fine up to $499 and potentially jail time. So this is to set the specific fine and make it consistent